City Council meeting to order, if you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you have a slightly revised agenda in front of you. The only thing that was added is the last item under the discussion portion of the agenda. It's an update on the Monroe Street property. I apologize, I'll take personal responsibility for that being omitted. We'll be able to give you a brief update on that this evening and afford anybody in the public an opportunity to speak to that issue at both the beginning and end of our meeting this evening. So from City Council this evening, present are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Girbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, Burgoyne, and Mayor Protam Tihar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, police chief Rennick, DPW director Fordice, city superintendent engineer Rubel, he's here, I'm sorry, Mr. Rubel, and Parks and Rec director Scruggs. For the rest of you present, if you'd please sign in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Roth to approve as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. Chief Rennick, do you have an introduction you would like to make?
I do, but he's on his way back in, so if you want to do that, I think first I would be back in.
Okay, well, very good. Well, we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Laura Girbaugh, 272 Markhanna Court. I am here regarding the Monroe Street property sale. I would strongly like to urge you not to make any decisions until we can hopefully have some sort of a communication, some quality discussion between the citizens that live around the park area and especially those four back lots of Markhanna Court. Each meeting that we attend, it seems like there are more and more things that kind of come to light, the last one being the planning commission meeting that we attended last week, and it didn't even dawn on any of us that, that once that whole thing is sold and those four back lots are attached to that, and I want to thank Damian Farrell, he really has looked at what we've had to say and made some adjustments to make it more appealing to those of us, but what it dawned on us is that the minute I open my gate, it's private property. And, you know, Mr. Roth, at last council meeting, had asked during the comments or the discussion about the property, whether there would be a possibility of building some sort of an access for those people in that soon-to-be community that would give them quicker access to downtown. Well, by doing what is being proposed, you're actually taking our access to the park away. We will not be able to, we can see the park, but we will not be able to actually go to the park. We have to go all the way around the block in order to access the park that we've accessed for over thirty years. So I really hope that we can have some time, that we can actually have some quality discussion. I appreciate the comment times that we've been able to have, but really have some one-on-one questions, answers, and hopefully we can come to some sort of resolution, because there are a lot of kids that play back there, and I don't think anybody really realizes it, because it is sort of this blocked-in area. So, yeah, it's gonna seriously change the grandkids, the neighbors, there's no sledding now, and all of that, so I really would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Girbaugh. Are there any other citizen comments on agenda items? No? Well, we'll just sort of wait until he gets here, Chief Rennick. Chief Rennick wanted to introduce our newest police officer when he's available, so we'll try and accommodate you when he arrives. We move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Tihar. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to our one unfinished business item for the evening, which is item 14-236. This is emergency shelter agreement. The first motion will be a motion to take from the table the following motion from December 1st, 2014, emergency shelter agreement. Moved by Girbaugh to take from the table, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Burgoyne. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of taking from the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to the subsequent motion, which will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 26, 2014, from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the emergency shelter agreement and to authorize or not to authorize the city manager Campbell to sign upon review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Ms. Cybo Koenig be the second on that one, we'll get you next time, Mr. Roth. Ms. Scruggs, since you weren't here at the last meeting, do you care to make a comment, and then we can open it up for questions?
Well, thank you very much. Sorry I wasn't at the last meeting to answer any questions you might have had, but I did make a follow-up phone call to the assistant principal Schluter from the high school to get some additional information, and essentially, the schools need to have, provide emergency shelter locations where, in case of, and it, you know, can vary from biohazard, gas leak, fire, a school shooting, whatnot, they have to have family relocation centers where the police know where all of the students are going, the instructors, educators, everyone. So it's pretty, I guess our facility would be one of the closest locations for Harvest and for the high school, and reciprocally, if we had anything that we needed to evacuate and we needed to get people to a safe place, we could use these schools as well. I did contact, we have our esteemed superintendent of schools here to answer other questions if you might have some as well.
Thank you, Director Scruggs. Are there any questions? No questions? Okay, that was easy enough, thank you kindly. Any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Cybo Koenig, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. Unless there are objections, before we proceed to new business, I'm gonna allow Chief Rennick to come up to the pulpit, or the pulpit, excuse me.
Amen, brother, amen.
See what kind of mood I'm in. The podium and, for a special introduction, so chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce to the council Chris Hoffman. Chris, if you'd come forward, please. Chris is our newest hired, he was hired December 5th. He has a bachelor's from the University of Toledo, graduated from the Washtenaw Police Academy, and is, like I said, is the newest member, part-time officer for the police department. Chris, have you got a couple of words?
Just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity given to me by the city, and I'm excited to work with everyone. I've met most of the people in the city hall so far, got taken around, and everyone's been really nice, and I'm excited to start and contribute to this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and we wish you well. Appreciate you being here this evening. Best of luck.
Chris, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Yep. We'll move on to new business. The first item is 14-242. This is North Harris Street reconstruction project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 26, 2014, from city superintendent engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the design bid and option C construction engineering service to Midwestern Consulting LLC with a fee rate of 4% of the construction bid with a not-to-exceed amount of $20,999 and option C construction engineering services at a rate of $82.28 per hour. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Mr. Girbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Rhodes. Thank you, sir. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make a comment, and then we'll open it up for questions?
Well, so far, this is our lone planned project for 2015, and much-needed restoration and pavement rehabilitation and some curb repairs for North Harris Street from just north of 12 all the way to its termini at Wallace. So it's a, it's a project we spent, you know, several months on performing the preliminary engineering, so we have a very exact scope of work built into the proposal request, and we received seven responses to the proposal request, and the overall best proposal was for Midwestern Consulting. And so I spell it out in the one-page memo, and there is a photo page attached just to show some general conditions and part of the challenge of restoring the street to a much safer and rideable condition.
Very good. Mr. Rubel, are there any questions for our city superintendent engineer? Mr. Girbaugh, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, it says that the NEO project FY15 and '16 budget will cover this. How will this be coordinated with Michigan Avenue? Do we know exactly, are there gonna be overlaps, or I'm concerned about having two major roads tour at the same time?
No, we'll have design coordination. I mean, the only reason it's in FY15 and '16 budget is because it's next summer, and FY16 starts July 1. So we'll have our work done, you know, this year. It's just that part of the funds are from next year's overlap because of our fiscal year.
I didn't know there was gonna be a holdover from the corner there in the Capitol there.
But the design where they meld together somewhere between US 12 and McKay, the two designs will meld, that'll be coordinated with URS.
Any additional questions? Mr. Rubel, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion?
Oh, excuse me.
Please.
I forgot to mention, Mr. Scott Fisher is here from MCI, he's the lead engineer, and will lead the design, he's right back there. And so he will be working with us once again.
Excellent. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Well, if there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by councilmember Girbaugh, seconded by councilmember Rhodes to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-243. This is letter of understanding, police secretary. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated December 9th, 2014, from police chief Rennick, and to approve or not to approve the letter of understanding as provided.
Move to acknowledge receipt and approve.
Thank you, Ms. Cybo Koenig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Rhodes. Chief Rennick, the floor is yours to go over your memo and to make any additional comments that you deem appropriate.
Thank you. As councilors are aware, Linda Longberry retired from the police department back in 2013 September, and during that time, we chose not to replace her. In having conversations with Lori Fundo, our typist there in the police department, she shared with me that she thought that she could pick up some of those duties and handle them efficiently, as long as she didn't have to do the entire job. And what we did is we took some of Linda's jobs and spread them out between the police chief and some of the sergeants, and as a result of that, Lori was able to take care of the office function, still only working part-time, and as a result of that, it became evident that the additional duties that she was performing certainly needed to be compensated. I realize that this took quite a long time, but because of the union issue, non-union issue, discussions with Lori, discussions with the city managers, discussions with the city attorney, it became evident that we would like to make some type of an offer to her, to compensate her for this, at something in between what she was making as a typist and what an administrative assistant would make. And the letter that you have before you lays out the wage that was offered, which is $20.38 an hour, and because she had been doing the job since September of 2003, a one-time bonus to compensate-
Excuse me, chief, I think you mean 2013.
2013, thank you. All right, thank you. A $1,000 bonus to compensate her for the duties during that time period, and then retroactivity pay from now back through the first of our fiscal year, July of 2014. She works about 1,200 hours a year, and as you saw in the memo, that's roughly about $1,800 a year more in compensation for her, but the savings to the city by not replacing the administrative assistant would be at least $41,000 plus benefits. So a significant savings to the city, a little bit more money in Lori's wallet for purposes of doing the extra work that she's been doing.
Thank you, chief. Rennick, are there any questions for our police chief? Mr. Roth, please.
I was wondering, is this setting a precedent?
If you could help me a little bit with-
Well, has this ever done and done before? And do you foresee it happening again, and will we do the same thing?
Well, I think a lot would depend on who we would hire in the future. My goal would be to have an administrative assistant once again, as opposed to a secretary, because there are things that certainly aren't correct to share with a secretary that you might share with an administrative assistant. So in the future, an administrative assistant probably would be the direction I would go, but we'd have to wait until that time period to head in that direction.
Particularly, I was looking at giving the $1,000 bonus and retroactive pay. I was wondering if that's something that anybody else in the future would be expecting.
I don't believe so.
Or are we obligated to continue on? Just a question, are we setting a precedent?
I'll let Mr. Campbell in on this one. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my answer is no, it's not presidential, president's setting. This is based on a, it's a case-by-case basis, and because of the timeframe that unfortunately elapsed, we believe this is the proper, fair method to pay her for that time. So it would be a case-by-case, so there may be other ones that would justify it, which I believe this does, but there may be other ones that don't justify it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any additional questions for Chief Rennick? No? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion? No? Then we'll proceed to vote, because it's been properly moved by Cybo Koenig, seconded by Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-244, recommendation for preventative maintenance. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated December 10th, 2014, from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve city staff's recommendation to enter into a five-year contract with Siemens with an annual cost to be fixed at $26,266 for the rec center and $18,350 for city hall, and the DPW for $4,848 over the next five years, upon review and approval by the city attorney. Yes, please.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a slight change, and I apologize for not getting to this earlier, but Siemens, upon, is kind of reflected in the email that I sent out late last week, it was on, we learned of after the package went out, so my apologies, but initial conversation was, just as this was worded, the five years, but Siemens has since informed us that they can do a three-year freeze with years four and five, with the possibility of an increase not to exceed 3%, but that is to make up for any lost dollars, if you will, for any unseen equipment repairs. But there's also a safeguard in here for both parties, with a 60-day written notice that either party could break the agreement, and so that, for instance, again, but again, they would be limited to a ceiling of no more than 3% the fourth and fifth year. So my apologies for that.
All right, so I apologize if I'm being obtuse, but I'm a bit confused. Since this motion reads that we are either approving or not approving staff's recommendation, are you comfortable with the language as is, or do you seek to modify it?
I would suggest modifying it to say over, unless you could also add something, over the next five years, with a semicolon, for instance, excepting years four and five, the possibility of a not-to-exceed 3% annual increase.
Good. So that would be, you'd insert a semicolon after five-year or after contract?
After five, after years, the S in years. And then there, you'd still at the end would have, upon review and approval by the city attorney?
I don't have a years, I have a year. Okay, right, okay. The second.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would the clerk please read the motion as it's been adjusted?
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Please.
To acknowledge receipt of the memo dated December 10th, 2014, oops, sorry, from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, to approve or not approve city staff's recommendation to enter into a five-year contract with Siemens, and with the annual cost to be fixed at $26,266 for the rec center and $18,350 for the city hall, and the DPW for $4,848 over the next five years, except four and five, which shall not exceed a 3% increase, upon the review and approval by the city attorney.
You're comfortable with that? Okay. So there's been a different motion offered from the floor, or suggested, rather. Is there a mover and a second to that motion?
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Burgoyne to approve, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Roth. Okay. Ms. Scruggs, do you want to begin the conversation here, and then we'll open it up for questions?
Thank you. The past five years, we've used a maintenance company, Campbell, Inc., and they've serviced us, the city hall and rec center. They've done all of our preventative maintenance and guaranteed all of their work, so the five-year contract was up, and we went out to bid again, and we received, I believe I said, 11 bids. And we, our team of DPW director Fordice, Tillman Taylor, city manager, myself, all reviewed all of the bids and determined that, after a face-to-face interview, we determined that Siemens was our choice contractor for price and for experience, and, you know, based on what they can provide for the city. The difference is, this year, we brought on DPW as, for doing their preventative maintenance only. They don't have the guaranteed program like city hall and the rec center, but we're very comfortable with offering this job to Siemens. We have a couple of representatives here tonight, in case you have additional questions, but they're very professional, they've worked on all of the Dectron units, they have other companies that have that, Johnson Control Systems, all of the pneumatics that we have at the rec center, very qualified. In fact, some of the parts that are used are parts that their company makes, so we might have a little bit of a better discount than another company. So as you can see, the prices annually, 26, 266 for the rec center, which actually is a decrease from what we've been paying with Campbell, Inc., just a slight decrease, and then city hall, 18,350, and DPW, 4,848.
Thank you, Ms. Scruggs. Before we open it up for questions, I know we have two gentlemen from Siemens. Do you care to make any comment at this time? You certainly don't need to, but if you'd like to, we would welcome that.
No, I was just making sure you guys are aware that we are here to take any questions and we definitely welcome having you as a customer, and hopefully we can execute for the next five years.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any questions for Ms. Scruggs? We'll start with Mr. Rhodes, and then Mr. Girbaugh, did you have a question as well, sir? Okay, Mr. Rhodes first, please.
Ms. Scruggs, I had one question. Campbell, who had the contract previously and are most familiar with her operation, their preventive maintenance and repair was almost $64,000, as opposed to the 26 that we have here now, and I'm a little concerned that maybe these other folks are not gonna have enough money in there to do the repairs that are required.
That was an alarming number that came back to us from Campbell, Inc., and I think that what has happened over the past five years, they got themselves into, again, some of you might not have been here, but they came to us with this program. We didn't know, I didn't know that it existed out there, and they, that was their initial bid, and they stuck to it for the five-year contract. Over those years, they've had a lot of repairs that have had to be made on the Dectron from the leaking, help me, the Freon-
Piping, oh, piping and the refrigerant?
Yeah, the refrigerant leaks, which has caused a lot of, a lot more repairs than what they expected. They've replaced our compressor, boilers, several pumps. Our equipment is in very good condition. Again, there's no question of the service that Campbell, Inc. provided for us, they do quality work, but we can't afford to pay $64,000 annually for preventative maintenance and repairs for that. Again, we interviewed face-to-face Siemens, and we're very comfortable, they took a tour of our facility, and they looked at all of our equipment and maintenance, and they're very comfortable with that price.
Please, if you'd like to comment on that.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just to add to that, to what Ms. Scruggs was saying, again, we did require the walkthrough, and we sat down face-to-face, and we talked about these challenges, and, you know, they feel, and from them to us, is that they feel that they can provide the service for that amount, so.
And they're a large enough company, if it turns out they can't, they've got enough other resources.
Correct.
And we'll have a contract.
Correct.
I wish you folks well.
Any follow-up, Mr. Rhodes?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Girbaugh?
Pretty much, that was the question I was gonna ask, but how different is our contract, current contract, to what's gonna be proposed? Is it identical language and everything, so that the same thing is covered? Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure there wasn't any change. Thank you.
Additional questions? No? Okay. Ms. Scruggs, thank you very much. Is there any subsequent discussion? No, that's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, again, thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. We move on to our final new business item of the evening, which is 14-245. This is Michigan Wildflower grant, excuse me. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated December 10th, 2014, from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the request to apply for a Wildflower Association of Michigan grant in the amount of $600.
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion by Burgoyne to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Ms. Scruggs, do you care to make any comment?
I feel like it's the Carla Show today. Actually, this is a grant that one of our park commissioners, Ms. Burgoyne, brought to us. She found it on one of the websites for Michigan Wildflower, and it's, she's the brainchild behind this. She wrote up the grant, she researched it, and I think she's prepared a very, very well-thought-out grant proposal. We're kind of on a time crunch, because tonight is the deadline to get this submitted, so if approved, she's gonna run home and submit that grant for us, if that's acceptable. But in any event, the grant is to provide some native wildflower areas in a couple of our parks. Wilderness Park, if you're familiar with the park along Willis Road, on the side nearest to Ann Arbor Street, there's like a detention area, rain garden area, so that would be an area where additional native flowers would be put in there, so we'd have a splash of color, maybe not just one time a year, but all throughout the year. And then, again, down near the north end of the park, in that basin area, there'd be some additional flowers. So it's not, we're not creating new spots, new plots for them, they're going in already existing areas, so mowing, there's no mowing around it, there's no additional, you know, creating of garden spaces. And then the other area would be in, hold on a second, I can't read with my glasses on. The other area is?
On the backside.
Thank you. Yes, Max Adler Trail, sorry about that. Blanking for a second. But throughout the Max Adler Trail, there's some areas that we've identified that would, we could have these native plantings. Additional educational plaques and whatnot to kind of identify those plants and wildflowers.
Very good. Are there any questions for Ms. Scruggs? Mayor Protam Tihar, please.
Thank you. Well, I support this idea, and I just, this is not really a question, but a comment. I know that the library recently installed- I know that the library recently installed a native plant garden along, toward the library end of the Library Brecken Trail, and is contemplating also educational signage about the plants that are there. So if this comes through, it might be nice to coordinate.
Sure.
So that signs might look
Definitely.
The same or be identifiably coordinated in some way.
Great idea.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Scruggs, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have, and the motion is approved. We move on to discussion items, commission committee and task force reports from council members. Mr. Roth?
The, I want to report on the cable commission. We met this past, or last week we met, and you look for some changes that they're looking at far as upstream and streaming some live stuff from other places than just here. And they hired two production, new production assistants, they're part-time people, and that's going to help out with far as producing more little videos and hopefully with the programming. And they were planning an open house coming up, perhaps April 23rd, 2015. There'll be more information out on that. And looking at perhaps offering classes during the summer through, at SETN Station itself, for anybody to be interested in that. So Jay Stanton has done quite a bit of work this past three months in order to help improve the station, and I think that we will see some changes in that particular station.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Additional commission committee or task force reports. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just an update on HTC, Historic District Commission. We just recently had another member step down, and so we have an opening and looking for anyone that's interested in participating in the Historic District to submit an application and have for consideration by the mayor.
Thank you. And I just confirmed with the clerk, Mr. Brown, regrettably, because he's a great asset, did submit a letter of resignation to the clerk's office, and so that will be received and filed at our next council meeting. But yes, if anyone out there is interested in serving on the Historic District Commission, we would strongly encourage you to turn in application for the consideration of both myself and city council. Additional committee, commission committee or task force reports? No, how about reports or other announcements? Ms. Sebo Koenig?
Just from the Slane Chamber of Commerce, thank you to all of the sponsors and volunteers who helped make last week's holiday festivities, including the Christmas parade. Just a wonderful time for the community. We had a great time, and we had a great crowd, great weather, and just really appreciate all the support.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Sebo Koenig, and thank you for your leadership. I don't, I don't think it would have been a success without all of your efforts and the efforts of all the volunteers at the chamber, so thank you for that. It's a signature event, and this community really, really values that. Additional announcements, Mr. Burgoyne?
This is my last meeting since I'm stepping down for the council. I just wanted to thank the other council members for their dedicated work, and I really appreciate how hard each one of them puts themselves into it. And you see it differently from this side, Mary Hess knows that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Any additional announcements? No? How about, Mr. Rhodes, we actually moved this to this meeting due to your absence at our last council meeting two weeks ago. Would you like to talk about the Environmental Commission's recommendations to City Council regarding median rain gardens?
I would, and thank you for bringing this back on the agenda, since I was not able to attend the last meeting. For the benefit of those in our audience and for those watching on our Community Access Television Channel, I'll read the motion that was passed by the Environmental Commission at their November 19th meeting. It was moved by Nighthammer, seconded Price, to recommend to the Slane City Council that during planning and designing of the reconstruction of Michigan Avenue, green infrastructure techniques to manage stormwater, such as median rain gardens, be seriously considered. And that motion was passed unanimously by those commissioners in attendance that evening. I was unfortunately also absent from that particular meeting. And this ties in well, I think, with the discussion, the town forum that we're having tomorrow evening at, beginning at 6:30 at Liberty School Cafeteria, to talk about the Michigan Avenue Streetscape and makeover. And I would encourage everyone to come and attend that. The Environmental Commission, as well as myself, feels very strongly that we should do more than just say that we are an environmentally friendly city. We should put our money where our mouth is, and we should actually do some of those things. And I believe that becoming more environmentally friendly will help to attract more young families to our community, and it's just, you know, it's the right thing to do. So that's it for me, I believe.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, we appreciate that. Any other reports or announcements? I just have one. Actually, I think it was, actually, I think it was in my mailbox today, or delivered today. But many of you may recall in 2011, late summer, early fall, the league, Michigan Municipal League, produced and printed The Economics of Place, The Art of Building Great Communities, which is a resource that we distributed to council members and council candidates at that time. That publication has been updated, and I received, again, in the mail today, the 2014 version. For those of you who may recall the 2011 version and read it, it's a pretty, it's a great resource. There's a lot of good insights and thoughts in it. It's pretty dense, and this thing could stop a bullet, quite frankly, which is why I'm sort of glad they didn't mail it out to everyone, because I can only imagine what the postage would have been. But since I think we could all agree that this is a great resource, we are, I spoke to the city manager prior to tonight's meeting, we're going to try and get a copy for everybody. I think there's a lot of similarities and a lot of duplications from the 2011 version, but also a lot of new and interesting thoughts and projects that are highlighted in this book. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Hopefully, we can get it in the next couple of weeks, and we will place it in your mailbox for delivery. Okay? Yes, sir?
Mayor Merrill, I already have a copy of that.
Do you? Okay, okay. Anybody else have a copy of this already?
Not the new one.
Did you get it as a member of one of their task forces?
No, I had a personal contact with somebody in the mail, and I got it. This one, as opposed to the first one, the first one talked more about how to create place. This one is more how different places have been created, so it's case histories in different communities.
Well, I'm impressed you had a contact and already got it a few weeks ago, because in my understanding, this is hot off the press, so it's good to know people in the know. Well, we will, we will make sure that we get a copy for the rest of you and maybe have some available here at City Hall if there's any other interested parties or stakeholders who want to take a look at it. So if there are no additional announcements, and I sort of deviated, I apologize. The second to last item on the discussion agenda this evening is an update on our sidewalk strategy. Mr. Fordice, do you want to care, or do you care to make a comment at this time? And if there are any questions, we'll entertain those.
The strategy that we developed at our work session a while ago, the primary component of that was the grinding of trip hazards, and that contract will be bid this winter for work to begin in the spring, as soon as the weather breaks. And that will eliminate approximately 90% of the existing trip hazards. The remaining flaws in the sidewalks are those that require reconstruction of the sidewalk, remove the existing concrete, regrade, reform, pour concrete. And at the work session, the preferred alternative for that was to continue with our traditional assessment process, where we assess the adjacent properties for the improvements in the right-of-way there. So a kind of a two-pronged approach for that. One, utilize the condition survey that we have, which has very specific geographic information in it, to pull out all of the city-owned sidewalks. Those walks in the right-of-way that front on city-owned property, treat those as a separate project, go out and inspect each of those and create a priority list based on severity of the flaw and level of use of the sidewalk, and then group those into projects and get those repaired. Similarly, the walks that front on private property would go through a similar process, get prioritized and grouped into projects for the assessment procedure, and get that special assessment process in motion. Recently, had some information that there might be some additional new challenges in that assessment process, and I'm trying to get more specific information on that and find out if that is still a viable funding option for those repairs, and when I get that information, we'll report back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Just so that we're all crystal clear, the vast majority of the defects, approximately 90%, will be rectified by doing a professional grinding, and the contract to approve that will come before this legislative body sometime in the spring of 2015? Early spring, late winter? Correct. Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Burgoyne?
Right. The 90% of the items repaired by grinding, those will be both on public areas and non-public areas, right?
Correct. That's Citywide.
So we'll just take care of that one?
Yes.
Okay. Then, the next step is to take care of a certain percentage of the public areas, which might bring us to 95% or so?
I don't think it'll be that high.
Okay.
But another couple of percentage points.
Okay. And then, by that time, how much time will transpire before we get to that 92, 93%?
Well, the 90% will be done in the next construction season. And then, the city frontages, that may also be completed in the next construction season, depending on, I haven't quantified the dollar figures there yet, so I'm not exactly sure how big a chunk that is. But that is, in terms of quantity of work, feasible to do in the next construction season. The other ones that require the special assessment process, that process itself will take probably a year, so that won't, we won't get beyond the 91, 92% until the construction 2016 season.
Yeah, the reason I was asking for the timeline is, if in a year and a half, just about all of the significant defects are taken care of, that might be a time to come back for reconsideration of the city itself moving forward and taking everything over at that point. Because at that point, everyone will have been dealt with on an even basis. So it's, that would seem to be a propitious time to look at that again, just suggesting.
No, I agree. I think once we, once we approve a contract to rectify, again, a substantial majority of the defects and flaws, we can reconvene as a legislative body, probably in a work meeting, a format a little bit more conducive to dialogue and discussion, to discuss the appropriate steps and how best to move forward. Yeah. Additional questions for Mr. Fordice? No? Appreciate it, and glad that we're still moving in the right direction.
Looking along.
Thank you. The last item is the Monroe Street property, and I would welcome any comments that Planning Commissioner Gearbaugh or City Manager Campbell or City Engineer Superintendent Rubel have, since they were all present at the last Planning Commission meeting this past Wednesday. But just wanted to give you a brief update. The Planning Commission did receive all the material related to the sale of the Monroe Street property, and did receive presentations from both Peters Building and Damian, asked a series of questions, and made several comments. There were two commission members who were not present at Wednesday's meeting, and there were some commission members who said they wanted to take a look at the Karpinski property, walk the parcel before they provided comments and opinions to City Council. So in a subsequent discussion that I had with Assistant Clerk DeHaan and City Manager Rubel, we're going to be drafting a document, or staff is going to be drafting a document that will include all the comments and thoughts from the Planning Commissioners. And I think they're asking for that by about next week at this time, is that correct? Do you want to comment on that?
Another request went to Mr. Farrell's office today, although he was out, and so we may hear from him yet tomorrow.
Okay. For an updated PowerPoint?
Correct.
Okay.
Because he had a revised layout.
Would you also, would you also, in addition to forwarding that to the Planning Commissioners, would you also forward that to City Council? Since they would have
Yes.
Seen the initial PowerPoint presentation a few weeks ago?
Correct.
So to make a long story short, my friends, once those comments and that memorandum has been drafted by staff and signed off on by the Planning Commissioners, that will be forwarded to council for your review and consideration, most likely at our second meeting in January, the 12th. And so it will be added as a discussion item at that time. Anything else I'm missing, Mr. Gearbaugh?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay. Very good. All right. Okay, if there's nothing further to be brought before City Council this evening, no? We move on to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, is there any other business to come before the City Council this evening? Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor Merrill. I did want to thank Mr. Burgoyne for his service here on City Council for the last two years. I appreciate your willingness to step forward and give of your time and energy. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Or any other business to be brought before City Council? No? Then I would remind everyone that we have a public meeting tomorrow night, December 16th, at 6:30 PM at the Liberty School Cafeteria, to discuss our Michigan Avenue makeover, which will commence in 2016. That's at 6:30. We strongly encourage public participation. Our first meeting of the year will be on January 5th. We have a wrap-up, wrap-up strategic planning session at 6:00 PM on the 6th, and then we have our next regular meeting on the 12th, and I think that is scheduled as such because of Martin Luther King Day, if I'm not mistaken. Yep. A work meeting at 6:30, discuss the TAP grant application, and then a regular meeting at 7:30. There are no absences this evening, so I would seek a motion to adjourn at 8:17 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting's adjourned.